To the March 24th, 2025 Tuolaton City Council meetings. It's wonderful to have so many people in the audience tonight. Tonight, we'll start off, call the meeting to order, and then we'll move into the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council President Pratt.
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to announcements, and our first announcement tonight is Arbor Month Presentation, Proclamation, and Youth Recognition. Emma.
I'm, I won't stand my own thunder.
And Cozy.
Yes.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Emma Gray. I'm the current Teapark Chairperson, and I am joined by our student member, Cosima Slider, who we're incredibly grateful to have as a student and youth voice on our committee. She's going to help do the presentation tonight.
Because she's a shrinking violet we learned in DC.
I know. Is the slide presentation going to be available?
It could be.
Oh.
I'll have to do it by memory.
We can, but, you know, I don't want to deprive the people. Awesome. Okay, Cozy, take it away.
Yes, so Tuolaton recognizes April as Arbor Month to celebrate the many contributions that trees make to our lives and communities. And some of the highlights that are on these slides that we can see in our everyday lives are the clean air, the noise reduction, the reduce of climate change that trees bring to the table, and as well as their aesthetically pleasing, just aura, I guess. But yes, and some of the Arbor Month events and activities that we have.
Am I clicking, or is it not? There we go.
Okay, there we go.
All right.
We have the Tuolaton Trees Photography Contest, the Kids Poster Contest, the Arbor Month Proclamation, Pollen, Pollination, and Pollinators Event, Tuolaton Historical Society's Poetry Contest, Putting Down Roots Volunteer Tree Plantings in Tuolaton, Hug a Tree for Earth Day, Tuolaton Library Tree-Themed Storytimes, and Arbor Month Scavenger, and an Arbor Month Scavenger Hunt in the Park.
Thank you. And one of the things we all like the best about Tuolaton is that we have a lot of tree events all year round, but April's the best month, right? So one of the things that Cozy mentioned is the Kids Poster Contest, where kids in our community are given the prompt "Tuolaton Trees Are," and then they can provide beautiful art for us. And I'm really excited to share with council and the crew here the winners of the 2025 Kids Poster Contest. So in the grades K through 2 category, Joelle K. is our winner by answering "Tuolaton Trees Are Food and Home for Animals" with that beautiful art on the left. And on the right, Brooklyn R. is our grades 3 through 5 winner, answering the phrase "Tuolaton Trees Are Enchanting." And I could not agree more with the way both of these students completed that. So congratulations to them following our quick presentation. I think they're going to be honored for that. We also have a Tuolaton Trees Photo Contest, open to all ages, and the winners you can see up on the screen there, the first-place winner of the Tuolaton Community Photo Contest is Diana Fitz with her photograph of Tuolaton Community Park at sunrise, really beautiful. And then our second and third-place winners are both from Jergens Park. Julie McGuire is second-place Aurora Over the Treetops, and third place goes to Tim McGuire, Fungus on Tree. So congratulations to all of our photography winners. That's really a wonderful addition to Arbor Month. And I'm going to let Cozy take it away with our quick mention of Tree City USA and how important that is.
Yeah, so if you're not aware, the Tree City USA certification is awarded by the National Arbor Day Foundation to recognize communities that have proven their commitment to an effective, ongoing community forestry program. The Tree City USA standards include Tree Board, Tree Care Ordinance, Community Forestry Program with Budget, with a budget, and the Arbor Month Observance and Proclamation. So the city of Tuolaton is recognized as a Tree City USA for the 38th consecutive year.
Yay!
So, and with that, we will turn it back over to council to continue with the proclamation and recognizing the winners. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you, Cozy. So next, we would like to invite the winners up to accept their award bags and framed poster. So can I please have Joelle Keck come on up? And, and Brooklyn Richardson.
Parrot, if you guys want to get up and take pictures.
Are you going to come around this way?
Hey.
Do you want to come? Well, sit down and talk into the mic first and tell us your names.
No, no. Girls, come on up here.
Tell them your names real quick. Tell them your names really quick.
My name is Joelle. Hi. My name is Brooklyn.
Nice. Now go up with those guys, because we can get your prize. Take your pictures.
One at a time.
Good job, Ellen. Nice.
Congratulations.
I was scared. It's a big cheer for some infections. Just wanted to know if I went out.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Month in the city of Tuolaton. Whereas Arbor Day is a celebration observed throughout the nation and the world in which individuals and groups are encouraged to plant, care for, and celebrate the many values of trees. And Arbor Month is observed in the state of Oregon during the entire month of April 2025. And whereas healthy trees reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, moderate, moderate the temperature, calm traffic, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and are a renewable resource, giving us paper and countless other wood products. And whereas trees beautify our community, increase property values, and enhance the economic vitality of business, business, business areas in Tuolaton. And thousands of trees and shrubs are planted by volunteers in Tuolaton's parklands every year. And whereas 2024 marks the 38th consecutive year that, that the city of Tuolaton has been certified as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for following best practices in community forestry management. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolaton, Oregon, that the city of Tuolaton designates the month of April 2025 as Arbor Month in the city of Tuolaton. All are urged to support efforts to protect and plant trees, to glad, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. The city of Tuolaton supports the Department of Forestry and the National Arbor Day Foundation in the recognition of the value of trees and forests by proclaiming April 2025 as Arbor Month in Tuolaton, introduced and adopted this 24th day of March 2025.
All right, thank you. Next up is our second announcement is Transgender Day of Visibility proclamation, again with Council Sacco.
Before I read the proclamation, I just wanted to thank one of our co-chairs of the Idea Committee, Chris Paul, for, Chris, your leadership in bringing forth this proclamation. So thank you very much. Before I read the proclamation, is there anything that you would like to say?
I just want to thank the community for coming together and showing people that Tuolaton is a place where everyone is valued, no matter who you are, no matter how you identify, no matter what kind of, of background you have, or how you're living your life, that we are all welcome and we are all loved. And I want to just acknowledge my friend Emily Baker, who came to stand up for the trans community, and she spoke in support of the proclamation last meeting, and all the people who spoke in support of the proclamation, who really showed, I wasn't expecting that outpouring of love, and just to see that so many people come together to show how loving of a community that Tuolaton can be, it was just amazing. So I wanted to just thank the city council for making that happen, so it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Chris. And don't go anywhere, because we have a, a copy of the proclamation for you, so sit tight, as I'll invite you up here in a second. Declaring March 31st, 2025 as Transgender Day of Visibility in the city of Tuolaton. Whereas March 31st is internationally recognized as Transgender Day of Visibility, celebrating the resilience, contribution, and accomplishments of transgender and non-binary people. And whereas transgender and non-binary people make significant contributions to our community, culture, economy, society, enriching the lives of all who live in Tuolaton. And whereas transgender and non-binary individuals continue to face systemic discrimination, lack of access to health care, housing instability, and disproportionate rates of violence. And whereas transgender and non-binary youth face disproportionately high rates of homelessness and suicide due to family rejection, discrimination, and barriers to affirming health care and resources. And whereas creating supportive and inclusive community can significantly improve the well-being and safety of transgender youth by ensuring they have access to the resources, respect, and opportunities that they deserve. And whereas recent shifts in federal policy have created uncertainty and concern for many transgender and non-binary individuals, highlighting the vital role that local communities play in fostering inclusion, respect, and equal opportunity for all. And whereas the city of Tuolaton affirms its commitment to creating a community that is inclusive, equitable, and safe for all individuals regardless of gender identity or expression. And whereas Transgender Day of Visibility uplifts the strength, courage, and authenticity of those who live openly as their true selves, inspiring hope, understanding, and fostering a more inclusive community for all. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolaton, Oregon, that Tuolaton recognizes the 31st day of March 2025 as Transgender Day of Visibility. We encourage the community members to join in celebrating the contributions of transgender and non-binary people and commit to advancing equality, understanding, and justice for all, introduced and adopted this 24th day of March 2025.
Also, I just want to point out, fun fact, today happens to be my birthday. And this is a just beautiful birthday present that the city has given me today, so thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next up is our announcement, National Library Week proclamation. We'll start off with Jerianne Thompson, our famous library director.
I don't know about famous, but thank you.
One of the most well-liked city employees by far.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city councilors. I'm Jerianne Thompson, your library director and Equity Inclusion Officer for the city. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for supporting this proclamation in honor of National Library Week and for all that you do to support the Tuolaton Public Library. In times of economic or social insecurity, people turn to their public library. For some, the library is a beacon guiding them to resources or information. For others, it's a lifeline to accessing technology they cannot afford, or to finding a new job, or providing free enrichment for their children. And for others, it is a refuge, a place where they can find a kind face and social connection. Because of the work that you, city council, and we as city staff have done, right now people are turning to Tuolaton Library. In the first three months of 2025, we've seen a 5% increase in visits compared to 2024. In January, we had nearly as many visits as we had last August. One of our busiest months in January usually is not. Program attendance is at all-time highs, and use of eBooks and digital media continues to grow as well. At Tuolaton Library, we are making a difference in people's lives. Sometimes it's in big ways, and sometimes it's small, but each one of those interactions can cause ripple effects. I'm privileged to work with an incredible team of staff at the library, along with volunteers and four support groups. You'll hear from one of them, the Library Advisory Committee, later tonight. I see those folks creating those ripple effects dozens upon dozens of times every day. So again, I thank you for your support of the Tuolaton Public Library and for all that you do to enable us to make a difference in our community.
Council President Pratt.
Declaring April 6th through 12th, 2025 is National Library Week in the city of Tuolaton. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where people of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas libraries serve as a vibrant community hubs, connecting people with technology and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of their background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. And whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas the dedicated library workers provide a welcoming and inclusive space that promotes a sense of local connection, inspires discovery and collaboration, and empowers people to succeed and build a stronger community together. And whereas Tuolaton residents have a long history of strong support for public libraries, library workers, and library volunteers. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolaton, Oregon, that Tuolaton declares April 6th through 12th, 2025 as National Library Week. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit the Tuolaton Public Library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways the library draws us together as a community, introduced and adopted this 24th day of March 2025.
All right, so next up is the announcement for the Welcome Home Community Conversation event, and that will be led by Steve. And then I'll do CDBG. Going a little bit out of order, surprised you.
Keeping us on our toes, thanks, mayor.
That's it.
I am Steve Koper, Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm here to give an announcement for the Welcome Home Community Conversations event that will be happening this Thursday at the library. So Welcome Home is a nonprofit organization that supports affordable housing in the Portland metropolitan region. They do that by representing 60 other nonprofits also in the Portland metropolitan region, Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas Counties. They do that by a variety of different means. This event in particular is going to be community conversation, so community education about affordable housing. And when we say affordable housing, what do we mean? Affordable housing is housing that is, does not consume more than one, more than 30% of one's income on housing. Affordable housing is typically provided by adding subsidy to the cost of housing, and that's how it becomes affordable to people who don't make enough money. And if you want to find out more about that, we encourage you to come to the event. So one of the way, main ways in which Welcome Home, in addition to the educational outreach, helps to provide affordable housing, is that they provide advocacy for housing bonds, and so they were particularly instrumental in the passage of the Metro Housing Bond, which led to successes like the Plan Beck Gardens Affordable Housing Development in Tuolaton, bringing 116 units of affordable housing to our community. So with all that said, we have our community event unfortunately rescheduled because of the nasty weather before. Hopefully, the thunderstorms in the forecast aren't going to hold us back this time. We will be meeting at 5:00 PM at the Library Community Room this Thursday on the 27th of March. We have an RSVP link there, refreshments will be provided. All are welcome to attend. I will be there, several other city staff will be there. We'd love to see you all there. If for some reason you can't attend, or just simply want to learn more about Welcome Home as an organization, they're on social media, or you can go to their website at welcomehomecoalition.org. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, now circling back, Council Brooks will have an announcement dealing with community development block grants.
Thanks, mayor. And just for everyone's information, the, I sit on the public advisory board that does these community development block grants. They just put the draft 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan up for public review. If anyone wants to read it or, or comment on it, written comments can be mailed to the Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, at washingtoncountyor.gov. And I'm sure you can find it under Community Development Block Grants on the county website. We put over a year's worth of work into that, and, and always want to hear from the community. All right. So whereas the week of April 21st through the 25th, 2025, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program, and the Home Investment Partnership, HOME, program. And whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate-income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnership, HOME, program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over 1 million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas, over the program's history, our community has received a total of $1,810,617 in community development block grant funds. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolaton, Oregon, that the week of April 21st through 25th, 2025, is National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the visibility of housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. The council urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program by supporting increased funding for both programs in fiscal year 2025, introduced and adopted this 24th day of March 2025, City of Tuolaton, Oregon. I just want to say one thing about it, too, just because right now is a strange time. We, when we were in Washington, DC, were advocating for continuing these funds at all. The funds have not kept up with the original formula and have not kept, kept up with inflation by any means and are at risk of being cut. This year, the city of Tuolaton was awarded Community Development Block Grants to help improve the entrance and building of the Oneida Pole Center, to make it ADA accessible and improve the facilities there, and has also been awarded to Family Promise, which serves kids in the Tuolaton, Tiger Tuolaton School District. So these funds actually really do touch our community and our lives, and this is a really great week. If you want to write your federal representatives and talk about these kinds of things, this is the week that might, you know, make a difference. So I just encourage you to be activated and contribute your voice to the conversation. People in Washington want to know real stories from real people, how people really feel about these issues, and what's going on at the federal level. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Brooks. And our last announcement is the State of a City announcement. So to my left, your right, you can see a poster announcing the State of the City. I got my copy of Tuolaton Live today, and it was a full-page ad, and then I had a little brief article about this. So on April 23rd, at 7:30 AM at Bridgeport, the Grand Hotel Bridgeport will have the State of the City. It's a breakfast program like last year, so it's a free event, breakfast burritos, all kinds of different breakfast foods and drinks. There's no charge to come. Get there around 7:30. There's some networking and socializing between 7:30 and 8:00. We kick into gear at 8 o'clock with the program. All councilors will discuss a city council priority, and those priorities are neighborhood engagement, economic development, environment, culture and identity, housing, transportation, and finally parks. We'll also, we'll also introduce two of our newest executive team members. Sid Sin, who's our new Economic Development Director, our manager, and our new Parks and Rec Director, Dustin, will also be introduced at the event. And we're going to leave a few minutes at the end for questions. So again, mark your calendars, April 23rd, 7:30, the Grand Hotel at Bridgeport. We look forward to having you there. All right, so that brings us to public comment. Public comment is a moment for someone who would like to discuss something that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. I'll go ahead and take the folks who are in Zoom first, and then after that, I'll take the folks out in the room. So is there any in Zoom who would like to address the council on an item regarding something that's not on the agenda tonight? Are you up, Patricia?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you. Can you hear us, Patricia? We can hear you. Can you hear us, Patricia?
Yes, hi.
All right, there you go.
There we go. Thank you. The audio went out. Mayor and councilors, thank you for allowing me a couple minutes to speak. I want to just add comment to the work session today on notification of development within our city. And there was a lot of discussion about making sure that the renters were notified, and I believe that the thought process was that the renters would really automatically be residential. But looking at the Lamb circumstance specifically, there's a lot of properties around the Lamb property that are industrial and not necessarily owner-occupied. Now, it may be that they are, but not necessarily. So I think that there's some benefit to looking at notification of any party who is occupying property, whether they, whether it's owner-occupied or not. I know that there was some discussion- I know that there was some discussion about the signs. I would really like to encourage City Council to adopt having larger signs that are more visible, more, certainly more sturdy, and will hopefully last the, the test of time. You know, we're talking maybe six, twelve properties in a year, I believe that was, was stated. So, it's not like our entire community is going to be populated by great big development signs. And as it relates to email, I think that email is great, but that requires the citizens to go in and sign up for the email, which can be difficult even to, to get them to that point. And the thought of, of residents feeling like they're spammed by the city, I think people who aren't interested will just toss the postcard, and it will be done. Thinking about the cost, the added cost for notifying all parties who live in that thousand-foot radius, when you look at the cost-benefit, I think that the benefit totally outweighs the cost. And so, those are my comments, and I thank you kindly for letting me have a minute.
Okay, thanks, Patricia. Was Laura Baker going to say anything, or is she just attending? I saw Laura up there. Yes, no?
She hasn't said anything to us.
All right. All right, so then I'll go with the folks who are in the room. First up, Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening. I'm Danny O'Neill. I'm the Byram CIO Land Use Officer. The thing I'd like to talk about today is the Norwood Road. Now, there's been discussion previously about that. The thing that concerns me most currently, right now, are there are two items. The speed, and the current condition of the sidewalk on the north side. The condition of the north sidewalk is horrible. I'm surprised there haven't been some people that have fallen and really hurt themselves. It's rough, it's potholes, it's just not acceptable as a sidewalk. I'm not sure who's responsible for that, if it's a city or a county.
Washington County.
And I don't know what we could do as citizens, or you as the council, to impress upon them the importance of this, with the development of the new homes that are there, excuse me, and also the Norwood Development Project that's currently being put through the system. The amount of traffic, not just vehicular, but pedestrian traffic that's kind of come from that, from the people trying to use it. So, if there's something that we can do as the city, or if there's something that's being done as the city, I would like to know what that is, and if there's any way that the citizens, particularly the ones in the Byram area that occupy that subdivision, what we can do to help. Thanks for your attention, thanks for the opportunity to address you, you fine people, and have a good evening.
I got answers for you.
Uh-oh.
All right, so the person you need to reach out to is Commissioner Snyder.
Snyder.
Jason Snyder is your Washington County Commissioner, that's within his region, and he'd be the person you need to talk to about having Washington County address that. We've brought it up numerous times to Washington County, and it's usually we come back with the answer that Washington County doesn't have the money. We've, during the, some of the development process, bottom sunrise, we fixed some of the ADA ramps, but they have jurisdiction over those sidewalks. I know exactly what you're talking about. I talked to Roy Rogers about it numerous times, but now we have a new commissioner, so I'd say start emailing Commissioner Snyder about it, to get it on his radar. As far as the speed, I know our traffic engineer is working with, they've had some frustrations because it's a county road, but it's also ODOT, there's all kinds of nightmares, things to get ODOT to lower the speed on it, but they've been working on it for a while. I don't know what the latest status is, but you think something would be simple, is just lowering the speed limit? Isn't simple with ODOT.
Well, who patrols that area?
We do.
But yet, we don't have control over it.
Right.
Makes no sense.
But when it's very roads, same thing. We agree with you.
So, talking to Commissioner Snyder.
Snyder.
Same thing.
Now, the ODOT, that's an ODOT question. I know Mike McKilt, Mike McKilt, God, Mike McCarthy has been working with ODOT on that, and I know he's hit some snags. They're not super cooperative, because it is a county facility.
Well, it's been a long time that it's been addressed, and nobody seems to be moving.
Yeah, it's.
And I know it's.
The bureaucracy involved with ODOT is unbelievable. I'm totally sympathize, we all want that speed limit lowered, but it's just banging heads against the wall with working with ODOT. But get ahold of ODOT, you know, email Chris Strickler. Chris Strickler's the ODOT Director, and I'd start there.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
And you know, you can't hurt to go hit the governor up either.
We won't stop.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I have Michelle Palma. Parma? Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Hello, how are you guys doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing great. My name is Michelle Palma. I'm a social worker with Devida Dialysis. I have a master's in clinical social work. I've worked as a hospice social worker, home health, and now dialysis with people who have chronic illnesses. Not a very beautiful topic, but it's essential. And I have some handouts for you that I have already on your desk. So, transportation for dialysis patients is really what I'm here to address. If you've ever known someone who uses dialysis, or needs to go to medical appointments, who are elderly or impaired, and they rely on life-sustaining treatments to get there, would be their transportation. Typically, people who were using Ride Connection, or Ride, yeah, Ride Connection with Washington County, that has gone away recently. And so, a few of my patients, we've either had to turn away to a different location, or are now having to drive after dialysis, feeling weak, and, or they're opting not to come to dialysis, which is terrible, because it's life-sustaining treatment. And so, I just want to address that Twolton could potentially provide a service like Wilsonville with the SMART program, where they're elderly and people with disabilities are able to use transportation for medical appointments outside of the city and in the city. In the city, it's no cost, in Wilsonville, with their SMART program. Outside of the city, it's a small fee. And if we could implement something similar in the City of Twolton, that would be great. We do have two dialysis centers in the City of Twolton. One is Devida Dialysis, which is on sixty-eighth, near the Legacy Hospital, and the other one is in Warm Springs Street. So, we have two of them, and I think it's really great that we have those services. However, it'd be better if all people that need dialysis, and also other medical appointments, can get to where they need to go. Not just dialysis, anybody who needs transportation, and can't use the regular system. Some people might be wondering, well, how do typically people get to dialysis that are struggling? Well, typically Medicaid. Medicaid is what people use for transportation, but people who have private insurance or other types of insurance are not eligible for TriMet care. And if they're outside of the three-mile radius, which a lot of Twolton is, they're unable to access those life-sustaining treatment.
So, I wasn't aware Washington County did anything to Ride Connection.
So.
Not that I heard.
Washington County had a program called Ride Connection.
Yeah.
It ended for, or sorry, Ride Connection had transportation services for multiple counties. It ended in Washington County, and so, our Twolton, Wilsonville, Sherwood community members are unable to access it. Luckily, Wilsonville has that transportation service, so they're covered, Twolton, Sherwood, surrounding Beaverton area. Anybody else is unable to access that.
Can you follow up on that? Because usually it's Ride Connection, we're pretty tight with Ride Connection, we didn't hear anything about this.
Yes, and I see, you know, that there's like the Ride Connection near the stop signs and stuff like that.
Yeah, we've got the routes running through here.
Yes, but if they're not within the three-mile radius, they can't access it.
Yeah, okay, we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you, and maybe like, do I get an email, or how do I follow up, actually?
Yeah, I'll come up and talk to you.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on something that's not on tonight's agenda? You don't have to be signed up. All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and move on. That brings us to the consent agenda, correct? Yep, consent agenda. Consent agenda, those items are considered routine, they will be adopted by one motion, unless someone on the council would like an item removed that are heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of four items. Consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of February twenty-fourth, 2025. Item number two, consideration of resolution number fifty-eight sixty-eight dash twenty-five, awarding a contract for cured-in-place plastic, CIPP, pipe re-lining services to Instaform Technologies LLC. Item number three, consideration of resolution number fifty-eight seventy-one dash twenty-five, amending the City of Twolton fee schedule and rescinding resolution number fifty-seven eighty-four dash twenty-four. And finally, item number four, consideration of approval of late liquor licenses renewals for 2025. Would any member of council like one of these items pulled from the consent agenda and heard later tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion as second to consent, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions of those motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, so that brings us to special reports. Our first special report is our outside agency grant awardee, Family Promise of Twolton Valley. Come on up. All right, good to see you, Myra.
Hi, Brian. Good evening. My name is Myra Mendoza, and I'm from, I'm the Director of Programs at Family Promise of Twolton Valley. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me, and thank you for bringing, mentioning it today. And this is to give you a little bit of a preview, or, or view as to what we're using our funds for, and what we're doing over at Family Promise. So, Family Promise provides multiple services to families in Washington County, from temporary shelter, eviction prevention, to housing vouchers. And we envision a community in which every family has a home, a livelihood, and a chance to build a better future. I think it goes this way, there we go. FPTV was very fortunate to have, been the recipient of the Project Turnkey funding, in which we were able to purchase a, a hotel of a hundred and fourteen rooms, which seventy of those are used for shelters specifically for families. And within our shelter, we provide many services to the families that we serve. This includes case management, food, clothing, and, and other resources under, under one roof. And in 2024, we provided fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five bed nights of shelter, and eighty-four percent of the households that exit our shelter transitioned into stable housing. One of the most important programs in our, under FPTV is our prevention and diversion. And basically, prevention and diversion just means diverting them from shelter and preventing them from being evicted, or, or losing housing. In 2024, two hundred and fifty-eight individuals were able to stay housed, and this really minimizes the trauma and the effects on the children. They don't have to relocate, they don't have to move out of the school districts, and many of the families we provide assistance for are students at the TTSD, or Tiger Twolton School District. Within our shelter, we also provide different activities, which we are, we have enrichment programs, and a lot of it is engaged, is around children. So, we have, this week, we have spring break activities planned. We also have summer activities throughout the summer, play park, preschool story times, bingo nights are super popular, and movie nights as well. And for adults, we have financial literacy, both in English and in Spanish, and we also bring community partners and resources within our shelter, such as Care Oregon, the library, and Help Me Grow, and other activities. And we cannot do what we do without our volunteers. Here is a picture of some teens that are volunteered at our shelter with, with the kids that are, that stay there. And Coco Club is our, named by the, by the kids of our shelter. It's an after-school program that takes place on Thursdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, all volunteer-led. Retired teachers commit, have committed so much of their time to be there, be present, not just help with homework, but be a friendly face and support for, for children after school. We also had a drama club perform and do a whole session week last, last year, last summer, for the kids, that was very well attended. That's why you have the princess dress there. Community engagement, I guess I'd, we couldn't do what we do without our volunteers, and we absolutely love them, because some, because of what, the time that they, they give to our shelter, the time, and their talents, we're able to provide them with hot meals that they, many help our chef to prepare. And movie nights and bingo nights are all volunteer-led as well. And back-to-school supplies, all donated by community partners as well. And this is, we also have a huge clothing closet, which actually kind of mimics a clothing closet that the TTSD also has for their families. Again, all led by our volunteer. We have our, our food pantry, also managed by our volunteers, which we provide food as well as hygiene items. Diapers, as we know, are very expensive, so we're able to provide diapers as well. And then, hot meals, three times, three times a week right now, all prepared at, at our community churches, that, that let us use their kitchen to prepare the meals. And then the middle is a basket, which we call our move-out basket, so every family that moves into permanent housing receives a basket with some of the basic essentials. With the renovations, we're currently under renovating our space. We have a new laundry facility, which is much better than what we had before. We had only one washer and one dryer before for about seventy families, which is not ideal. Now, we have a lot more washers and dryers. We have a dedicated space for case management that was nicely decorated by Emily Henderson, which is a, a interior designer. And then we have our playroom, which hosts our Coco Clubs and movies and all different activities. And then this is just the skeleton of what will be our kitchen, a commercial kitchen. So, this will be, where we'd be able to prepare and provide hot meals every day for all our families in shelter, as well as an updated lobby with office space for any community partners that are coming in to meet with our families. And how you can help, there's lots of ways. We can't do this work without community partners, without financial assistance from elsewhere. And how you can help, there's lots of ways. We can't do this work without community partners, without financial assistance from elsewhere. Right now, with the funding being up in the air in Washington County as well as our country, individual donations and support is crucial to keep the work going that we are doing in our community. Thank you.
Questions from Myra. Councilbrooks.
I just, I want to thank you for the work that you've done. And sitting on the PAB, I'm a social worker, and sitting on the PAB, I see, I've seen a lot of different programs. I think that the Family Promise Program is one of the best-designed and evidence-based programs that I've seen in our area, which I'm grateful for. I saw a lot more of it when I was back in Michigan. And I'm really proud that you're in our area. I also know Dr. Greenow, who's, does the Coco Club.
Yes.
And more. And I'm also curious, well, I just want to point out that prevention for homelessness is one of the most cost-effective things that we can do.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if you're going to come to the open house that we're having, or whatever the meeting is that's coming up on Thursday.
For the welcome home?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're well into the welcome home information.
Good, because I think that those, all those different perspectives are really important when we're looking at, actually, it's a supportive services bond. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Myra, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
The kitchen is well, way, way, way better from where, you know, as progressed as those pictures.
Yeah, I haven't seen it over, so.
Yep, all right. That brings us to the Library Advisory Annual Report. Dana and Ashley.
Hi again.
Hello.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you Dana Polino and Ashley Payne, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Twalton Library Advisory Committee.
Welcome.
On this slide there, you'll see our current members of the Twalton Library Advisory Council, or T-LAC. As a committee, we are dedicated to working with city councils to support Vision 2030 and protect our truly amazing public library. During the past year, T-LAC received regular updates from city staff about the project underway by Washington County Cooperative Library Services, WCCLS, of which Twalton Public Library is a member, to evaluate public library services, funding, and governance countywide. This project seeks to address needs related to library services in Washington County, including near-term and long-term funding mechanisms, of which we have some ideas for you, funding distribution to member libraries and library-based service levels. T-LAC reviewed the best practices for library service policies and provided recommendations on three policies this year: makerspace use, meeting rooms, and confidentiality of library records. Each month, we hear a report from the Teen Library Committee, which meets regularly to assist with developing exciting and interesting programs for youth. T-LAC also received presentations, presentations from library partners and recommended activities to strengthen these partnerships. Committee members discussed and made recommendations to support programs and services that align with several of the city council's vision statements. T-LAC annually reviews the library-proposed actions to achieve its strategic plan, and I want to take a moment to share with you some of the accomplishments within the library last year. And additionally, T-LAC will be involved in the updating of the library strategic plan later this year. We're excited to debut for you the library's new mascot design. As part of the committee's engagement about the library marketing plan, T-LAC also provided input on the mascot's design development. The library will launch the new mascot, including this design and three other poses, this summer. In addition to presentations and discussions from library staff about services and operations, another role for T-LAC is to hear and consider complaints regarding library policies or materials. There were no specific formal complaints brought before T-LAC this year. T-LAC holds open meetings, and members of the public are invited to attend. In addition, the committee regularly reviews and provides feedback on comment cards submitted by library patrons. Here are our goals for the coming year, our 2025 action plan. So we'll remain actively involved. We'll engage in WCCLS's services, funding, and governance evaluation product, excuse me, project. We'll remain educated in the operations of the library. We will continue to support the implementation of the library's marketing plan to promote programs and services. And we will advance the council vision, supporting social equity and inclusion within library programs and services. I, T-LAC appreciates all of the council's support and energy that you put into our public library. And this year, we want to make two recommendations. First, T-LAC requests that city council commit to protecting Twalton Library's open hours and the current level of library materials, services, and programs. Lastly, T-LAC seeks to partner with the city council to find solutions to adequately fund Twalton Library, and we request that council consider alternate funding services, sources. We're happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions?
Have any suggestions on alternate funding sources?
We, we have invited Mr. Don Hudson to join us after budgeting is completed. So perhaps sometime this summer to talk about what some of those options might look like. So we, we don't know yet, but we, we're looking forward to looking into it.
Yeah, and I mean, we're aware of the issues, and I feel our library, I think of it as our living room, and I'm always amazed at the things you have going on there, like my neighbor was in the Nutcracker thing, and you have little bands playing there, and this last year, I went and used the makerspace and got so much help. So I'm just, I, it's amazing to me every time I see all the programs you're doing, so thank you for all your work.
Questions or comments? Councilbrooks.
I'm really excited about the mascot. I'm wondering a lot of things about this mascot. There's three other poses. I'm wondering if one is blue steel. But is, is it going to be on materials? Are there going to be items? Are there going to be t-shirts or dog shirts?
We're, we're working on picking out some new promotional items right now, which is why it's not going to launch until this summer. We are planning a variety of things, including hopefully having some opportunities to make your own t-shirts, featuring the mascot in the makerspace.
And maybe have it be a contest?
Sure, maybe.
All right, well, I, I'm very open to the suggestions that you guys have brought up tonight. I really appreciate all the work. And it's a beautiful day to come in on your volunteer time and volunteer as much as you do to talk to us is really acknowledged and appreciated, and we're going to figure out a way to keep walking forward during this very strange time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead. Councilsacko?
Since Councilbrooks brought up the mascot, I have a question. Will the new mascot have a name?
No, probably not, no.
Maybe there could be a contest?
Maybe, we'll see. There are four different designs, so slightly different poses, and we also have different artifacts. So there's one that's holding a guitar and one with a laptop.
And then, at one of your requests about continuing the amount of hours at the library, I know Jeriann and Sherlin are very much involved with the discussions of Washington County. All the mayors are super concerned about this too, and we have monthly meetings with Chair Harrington to discuss, you know, what's going to come out the end of this process, and no one wants to lose hours. And a good deal of the cities are petrified of having to backfill hours and how they're going to do that. So we are, you know, right with you, you know, fighting the fight with the Washington County Commissioners, and what they're envisioning on the impacts to our libraries, but we're going to go down swinging. Hopefully, there will be minimum disruption or it won't be that bad. We'll see. We don't know yet. But, you know, Jeriann and Sherlin have been doing a terrific job. And one of the mayor's favorite things to do is beat up the chair about the library. So, we're with you.
Thank you for the support.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And item number three, Twalton Parks Advisory Committee. Beth and Emma making all the jeering in the back row there.
We were really excited about the mascot.
What do you want from us? It's eight o'clock.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us. My name is Emma Gray. I'm the current Chair of T-Park, and I'm joined tonight by my colleague.
And Beth Dittman, the co-chair of T-Park.
And we are here to present the 2024 annual report for our committee. This is us. We are a group of enthusiastic, if you can't tell, advocates for the parks and recreation system with a focus on the stewardship and enhancement of our community. Throughout the year, collectively, we attended more than 29, well, I guess, 29 meetings. I didn't mean to inflate the numbers. We attended 17 different activities in support of parks in our community, and it added up to 371 hours of volunteer time. Our current members include myself as the Chair, Beth as our Vice Chair, Carl Hostica, Michael Klein, John Makepeace, Rebecca Ryan, and Kosima, who you met earlier, our active student member.
A brief overview of what we do. We have regular meetings. This is once a month to learn about parks and recreation activities, to evaluate and provide recommendations to the city staff regarding the efficiency, or efficacy, sorry, of policies, programs, and procedures, but we like efficiency too. We'll provide feedback and guidance regarding the priority of projects related to the bond and the utility fee, and then therein acting sort of as an ad hoc bond committee. We represent the parks and recreation system to city councils, such as this evening. We attend activities and events to advocate for participation and engagement in the parks and recreation system, such as feedback or community input events regarding new spaces, and provide community outreach. So when, when it's time to vote on new parks amenities, we send those out within our networks as well. We're also the Bee City Facility Committee, Buzz Buzz, and the Tree City USA Board.
Which, as you heard earlier, is part of why we continue to get our Tree City designation.
We've had myriad accomplishments, if you will, in 2024. We'll start with those related to sustainability. We supported, supported the completion of the facility's inventory. We identified intersections between our parks operation and the council-approved climate action plan that was able to prioritize shade and playgrounds and, in playground projects, pardon me, and prioritization of native plantings and park projects as well. We promoted pollinator information and resources, promoted community resources for trees and bees. We also continued our work in diversity, equity, and inclusion, beginning conversations around current park naming policies and possible updates and recommendations, as was the discussion when we were naming, renaming Parque de las Casitas. And we worked with the Youth Advisory Committee to recruit interested and engaged student members from them. We also collaborated, continuing to participate in the selection process for the new Parks Director, which we are thrilled to have onboard now. We continued accomplishments with a lot of things related to the bond and utility fee projects. So we, as I mentioned before, acted as the ad hoc bond oversight committee and pursued implementation of Park Bronze projects, including constructions of Veterans Plaza, placement of the Twalton Community Park field lights, completion of all playground improvement projects from the bond, continuing support in the progress of the new river access adjacent to Community Park, supported planning and design of the Nyberg Creek Wetlands Trail, supported land acquisition for future park assets and natural areas. We advocated for continued progress in the integrated trail system and complete, supported the completion of the Highway 99 Trail Improvement Project, which you can see a lovely photo of our mayor and Councilbrooks and Councilpratt there. And then assisted. I know, yeah. A few other people too, yeah. And then assisted with staff with prioritizing utility fee projects, namely, within 2024, the shelter at Twalton Community Park getting the new stanchions.
So looking ahead to this year in 2025, we have some continued goals, although we want to steal the phrase from the, from T-LAC Action Plan. We think that sounds pretty cool. In the category of collaboration and community engagement, we plan to actively engage in onboarding our new Parks and Recreation Director, which we're very excited about. Better understand the park's budget and the relationship between parks and programs. Engage with city planning staff to continue to identify intersections between parks and the downtown core area planning process, which we know is ramping up this year. Engage with city finance staff to identify best practice for us as we continue to try to do our best work in a oversight role. Renew conversations about a community center. Collaborate with the idea committee to coordinate overlap of activities, and continue discussion around updates to park naming policies to prioritize community inclusion in anticipation of some new parks. In our sustainability category, we want to explore potential for the Integrated Pest Management Program and evaluate existing tree code for possible climate resiliency updates and recommendations. Those of you who are keeping score might notice that these are carried over goals from last year, which we didn't get to for a variety of reasons, but because the Climate Action Plan has advanced so much and because these remain real high priorities, we're hoping that some movement gets made on those these year. And then finally, we have a whole bunch of things that still stay in the projects arena. Bond, utility fee, ARPA, and some cross-agency funded projects, which we're excited about. We want to continue to assist staff in their really good work in prioritizing utility fee projects. We know the Facility Assessment Report is going to be coming to you all pretty soon. We'd like to continue our role as that ad hoc bond oversight committee with a specific emphasis on creating momentum around the identification of field improvements in partnership with youth sports and TTSD. We know that's a huge priority for our community, and so we want to make sure that their voices are heard on that. Continuing that progress on the new river access, which will really involve that Cora intersection. The construction now of the Nyberg Creek Wetlands Trail on the east side, or the south side of our city, which is exciting. And completion and appropriate community celebration, which we're very excited about, of Veterans Plaza. And then continued support of design and construction of ARPA-funded Las Casitas Park, which I think you've heard from staff, is ahead of schedule, and everyone's really excited about that. So that's just a little bit of what we were up to in 2024 and what we hope to get up to in 2025. So we welcome any questions or comments from council.
Questions coming. President Pratt.
You know what really impressed me here is that you guys obviously read our council goals and integrated them into your plan, and that's pretty amazing. So thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for having such inspiring goals.
Yeah, and I know it's very exciting, this, another year of a lot of activity for you, so I hope you enjoy.
Thank you.
Councilbrooks.
Thank you both for your tireless enthusiasm. I really appreciate it. I know the community appreciates it as well. I'm so excited about Veterans Plaza, and especially the art installation. And just want to thank you two for being such a great partner with the Arts Advisory Committee, which wasn't on there, but which I know is a real thing. And there's a lot of great leadership that helps make that a really good marriage, so to speak.
Instrumenting that, that was really great last year.
Yeah. And I guess one of the questions I had about the, the sustainability pieces, like ideas around continuing partnerships, I was just wondering who or what partners?
Oh, you mean the, like, for the pest management or the?
Oh, just in general, but pest management, I'm glad that that's still on the radar, especially since there's two new forms of cancer that's connected with Roundup, and just want the people that use our parks and facilities and people that work there to be safe.
Are you thinking of partnerships, like, within the city infrastructure or?
I thought it was like fiscal, in the fiscal.
Oh, yeah, that was really speaking to, as we are, are partnering with staff and hearing the updates and then being asked to make recommendations, making sure that we understand enough about the fiscal structures so that we can do a good job. And we've already kind of started working on that because we've had city staff come and visit our meetings to start educating us about the budget process and the different pots of money that exist for parks. So that was really mostly about us educating ourselves and making sure that when we're asked to make recommendations, that we do so from a place of being educated about how to do that the best way.
I love that.
Anything you would add? Anything you would add?
I think we also talked about partnerships as it related to field use and field improvements with youth sports and TTSD, and that's a real hairy web, but just wanting to continue that momentum where, when we're talking about intergovernmental agreements and how different bonds work with different organizations, but wanting to make sure, despite its discomfort, that we continue to move forward with that, because I know from the community with whom I interact most greatly, the field, field improvements were a big part of why the bond was supported, and so people needing to see that field improvement. It's great that we've done as much low-hanging fruit work on the bond, but now I feel like this next wave of the bond is going to be a lot of the harder, deeper, hairier things to get through.
Thanks, I appreciate the commitment, and I know that's a good start that we've made, and we're working on it.
Thanks again.
Thank you for mentioning, that's the most feedback I get now, is like, what's happening with our fields, so thank you.
Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
That brings us to general business. We have one item under General Business, consideration of recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. That's Council President Pratt and Council Sacco.
Hi, we interviewed people along with Council Reyes for six appointments, and our recommendations are Adam Peterson for Parks Advisory Committee, Taylor Sarman for Parks Advisory Committee, and Kosima Snyder for Parks Advisory Committee.
And we have Kathleen Seelaway for Arts Advisory Committee, Callie Savage for Arts Advisory Committee, and, once again, Kosima Snyder for Idea Advisory Committee. And so, and I just wanted to say, I know we say this every single time, but just amazing, amazing folks that come forward that we have the privilege to interview. And I really want to highlight Kosima, and just your dedication, you're here tonight, the whole meeting, and your involvement in so many committees. And when we were interviewing Kosima, I know we're talking, sorry, just talking to her about, about your, your involvement and just really highlighting your wanting to be involved in your community, and I just think that that's really great. So I make a recommendation for council to adopt the appointees to the advisory committees.
Second?
I have a motion second to adopt the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments recommendations. Any discussions on those motions? Is this a roll call, voice or? Voice? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. All right. Kosy's now supercommitted. All right. That brings us to items removed from consent. We had none, and after that is adjournment, who have a motion to adjourn? Or actually, sorry, Council Communications.
I just wanted to acknowledge, we just passed through Spring Equinox, which is also a time for probably most of the seven major religions that have celebrations during this time of the year, too, so it's a holy time for a lot of people. It's a time of renewal and hope, and it's a time for planting seeds, so be mindful of what we plant right now and see what flourishes in the future, and I appreciate working with you, with my fellow counselors, and planting good seeds for our community. Thanks.
Now I'd like to motion to adjourn.
I have a motion second to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Adjournment is granted. Have a good evening, everyone.
Recording stopped.